Good evening. If you'd all please rise for the presentation of the colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Now, you realize that we don't always have the wonderful Auburn Police Department color guard here for the pledge of allegiance, but tonight is a very special night. Two weeks ago, we were saying farewell to former Chief Bob Lee, and tonight, we are doing the swearing in. The official swearing in has already been done, but the ceremonial swearing in of our new police chief, Bill Pearson. Chief, would you please join me? And if I could have your wife Debbie and your daughter Emily join us up here, please. So I wanted to read you the bio of Chief Bill Pearson, and then we are going to do the oath of office, and then Debbie will pin Chief's badge. Chief Bill Pearson was hired with the City of Auburn in 1990 and was assigned to Patrol Division where he was awarded the Medal of Distinction while in field training. In 1993, Chief Pearson became the Police Department's first community policing bicycle officer. In 1994, he was appointed as a narcotics detective and served on the SWAT team as a marksman for five years. In 1997, he was promoted to the rank of sergeant where he supervised a patrol shift and the field training unit. In 1998, he became a certified firearms instructor and later, in 2002, took over as range master for firearms training. Pearson was then assigned as a special investigation sergeant where he supervised narcotics investigations and proactive detectives investigating vice crimes. He was also head of the inspectional services unit where he obtained state and federal grants and investigated internal affairs issues. That's never the favorite spot to be in, is it? No. Pearson was promoted to the rank of commander in 2005 and was assigned to the Patrol Division where he managed seven sergeants, the field training unit, defensive tactics, and firearms training. He was then reassigned to Support Services Division where he managed the training unit, community response team, DARE, and accreditation. He earned his Bachelor of Arts degree in sociology with an emphasis on public policy, law, and social control from Washington State University, and is a member of the Auburn Kiwanis, a 2005 graduate of the Leadership Institute of South Puget Sound, graduate of the International Association of Chiefs of Police Leadership and Police Organization, and a graduate of the FBI National Academy in 2012. And Bill was promoted to Chief of Police on June 25, 2018. You couldn't stick in one job for very long, could you, Bill? That just speaks volumes about Bill's leadership and his skills and his abilities to move around within the department and to learn all aspects of the department, so we are very pleased that we are here tonight. So I will read the oath of office, and then we will have Debbie do the penning. So, I need you to stand here, I'm told, for the best angle for the cameras, for you to stand there and me to stand here. And Bill, if you will, please repeat after me. I, William Pearson...
I, William Pearson.
...do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington...
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
...and all valid local ordinances...
And all valid local ordinances.
...and that I will faithfully and impartially...
I will faithfully and impartially.
...perform and discharge the duties of the office...
I will perform and discharge of the office.
...of police chief for the City of Auburn...
Of police chief of the City of Auburn.
...Washington, sorry.
Washington.
...to which I have been appointed...
To which I have been appointed.
...according to the law...
According to the law.
...to the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
...so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nicely done. Very nice. I want you to know, that is not a simple task. It looks like it might be simple, but it's not, so nicely done. Bill, would you...Chief, do you have a few words that you would like to say?
Yeah, just got a couple things here. All right, just a few words. First of all, I'd like to thank Mayor Baggot. To receive an honor such as this is kind of once in a lifetime, and it happens to very few people in this profession. And what's really honorable about it is to know that you have given me support and that you truly believe in my abilities to do this job, and I thank you for that. The council, over the last eight years, I've got to know several of you, and I really do appreciate all of the support you've always given me. It is nice to know that you always have the city's ideals in mind, and more importantly, the support you've given this police department has just been great. I can't think of a better council right now that has given us the support that you guys all have done, and I thank you for that. To my wife and family, my son isn't here, he is having a lot more fun than us on some lake tonight, and we didn't want to break the fun up, and so...But to be a wife of a police officer is no easy task. To be a spouse of a police officer is no easy task. You kind of take on the role of the officer themselves. You, like I had said before, you kind of live as the police officer lives with all the stresses and the trials and the tribulations, and I will say this, and I will say this at all retirements and graduations, that you cannot do this job by yourself. And so, I'd like to thank my wife and my family for the support they've always given me, so. Department recognition. You know, this is, at this point in my 28-year career, I can say that right now, we have one of the best police departments that I've ever been part of. We've had some people come and some people go, but right now, I think we have one of the best chemistries that I've ever seen in all my years here. We've hired some great folks, and to make a great department, that's what it takes, is this team and the things that you do. You know, we decided five or six years ago to make our vision of this agency to be a premier law enforcement agency that is trusted, supported, and respected. And I know one of the ways we're always going to try to do that is through community trust and through community partnerships, and it's nice to know that this police department is committed to those ideals. You know, Calvin Coolidge one time said, "No one is compelled to choose the profession of police officer, but having chosen it, everyone is obligated to perform its duties and live up to the high standards of its requirements." And I think this department has stepped up to that challenge. And always remember, moving forward, that any actions that we take from this point on can affect an individual for a lifetime or a community for generations, and so I know that this agency will always have those ideals in mind. But to be able to do that, I'll end with this, and that is, we're going to be committed in this agency for, for you to get the best of them requires us in leadership to make sure that we take care of those who serve. So serving those who serve is kind of the leadership mantra that we're going to continue to push at APD. And always remember this, hard moments throughout the change is ever-present, is need. People and communities that we serve will always depend on us, that is because our presence gives comfort to those who protect, because you'll always be there. So, once again, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, and good speed. Thank you very much.
And Chief, if you would please go forward and accept the appreciation of council. And Debbie, here at City Hall, because we have two Bill Ps, Bill Pearson and Bill Pelosi, I have started calling Chief Pearson Chief. So I understand, he told me that you have not been willing to call him Chief at home, so I just wanted to put in a little plug that, you know, he's going to get used to Chief here, so you just might want to pick that up at home and carry on the tradition. But thank you, Debbie and Emily, for being here tonight. It means a great deal to us. And for all of the officers in the audience, thank you for your support and for being here tonight to see your new chief sworn in, and for all of the people in the community that are here. Lynn Norman, who taught Leadership Institute, Bill, when you were there. I'm surprised you didn't say best class ever when I said class of 2005, but thank you. We look forward to years of additional dedicated service from you in the role of chief. All right, we will continue on with the business of the city. Tonight, we have appointments. We have board and commission appointments. We have the Lodging Tax Advisory Board. City Council to confirm the appointment of Reggie Mato to the Auburn Lodging Tax Advisory Committee for a term to expire December 31, 2020. Do we have a motion?
Move to appoint Reggie Mato to the Auburn Lodging Tax Advisory Committee?
Thank you. Do we have a second? Deputy Mayor Baggot.
I second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman, did you have anything you'd like to say?
Yes. This particular appointment has some requirements to be a member of the Lodging Tax District, so he has to work for one of the hotels, and he has an extensive management background, good education, past our background, and it's my recommendation to council to approve.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the appointment to the Auburn Lodging Tax Advisory Committee of Reggie Mato, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right, we also have the Transportation Advisory Board. City Council to confirm the following appointments to serve on the Transportation Advisory Board for terms expiring December 31, 2020, for Sarah Shaw and Peter DiTuri. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Pelosi?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to confirm the appointments to the Transportation Advisory Board, Ms. Shaw and Mr. DiTuri.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember DeCorsi?
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Pelosi?
Yes, I don't know Sarah, but I do know Peter DiTuri. He's a good Italian boy, and he's been living, he's lived in Auburn a long time, and he knows the, pretty much, the Auburn government, so he will fit in well in the Transportation Advisory Board.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the appointment to the Transportation Advisory Board of Sarah Shaw and Peter DiTuri, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right, I don't believe we have any agenda modifications tonight.
Your Honor, we don't, but could we confirm attendance tonight?
Oh, my apologies, yes, we can.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Baggot.
Sorry.
Attendance, I didn't have a call roll. So...
Here.
Okay. Councilmember Brown?
Excused.
Councilmember DeCorsi?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Pelosi?
Present.
Councilmember Trout Manuel?
Here.
And Councilmember Wales?
Excused.
Thank you.
My apologies, Danny, thank you. All right, we have a public hearing this evening, and that is for the Johnston-Sewer Payback Agreement. City Council to conduct a public hearing to receive public comments and suggestions with regard to the proposed ordinance number 6685, Johnston-Sewer Payback Agreement, and there was a presentation at the study session last week, so unless there are questions by the council, we do not have a staff report tonight. All right, seeing none, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on the Johnston-Sewer Payback Agreement? Second time, anyone like to speak? All right, on the Johnston Payback Agreement.
Do you call for public comments on...
Just on the public hearing for the payback agreement.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't hear back.
All right, we will close the public hearing, and we will now move to audience participation. This is the place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to the City Council on any issue. Those wishing to speak are reminded to sign in on the form provided, and please limit comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
My name is Michael Timman. I live at 29718 52nd Avenue South. I'd like to say hello to the City Council, Chief, congratulations, and have a complaint. It has to do with fireworks. I...This is the worst year, 4th of July, I think I've spent it in Auburn, I've been here since 93. The fireworks where I live, in that general area, reminded me of a war zone I participated in a long time ago. And I tried to make phone calls to the non-emergency number, but I kept getting a busy signal, and I'm sure I wasn't the only one calling, so I anticipated that it might be hard to get through, but I never did because I gave up. And I try not to be critical here, but I...There's a policy, I'm not sure, ordinance policy, whatever it is, it has, if it goes up or makes noise, then it's illegal in Auburn. Well, you would have had it been deaf to either not be able to hear or see anything that went up and made noise where I live. I couldn't even talk to my neighbor who were on the deck, his was across. It got so loud, we couldn't even hear each other, I couldn't even talk to my neighbor. So, I don't really know what the answer is, to be honest with you. Not, I don't...But this is every year. I mean, it's the same way on the 4th of July every year here. There's no such thing as a quiet 4th of July around where I live. So, I don't know what the answer is, and I don't know if anybody has any suggestions, but I'm concerned because it happens every year. And if you have a policy that you can enforce, then I'm not sure that you have a policy. I mean, you have a policy, but it's not enforceable. Now, I did some checking. I live in Patrol Sector 1, and I requested, I did a FOIA request to see how many citations were issued in Patrol Sector 1 from 6:00 at night to midnight on the 4th of July, and there were two. There was a hell of a lot more violations of the policy, or whatever you want to call it, than two. And I also, I call them stopping questions. I don't know what you call them, Chief. You call them stopping questions when you stop somebody, and when you call it a field interview, or whatever term you want to use, okay? So, I also requested to know how many stopping questions were done in Patrol Sector 1 at that time between 6:00 and 12:00. In Sector 1, there was, according to the information I got, there was three. So, and for some reason or another, I got the information for Area 2 or Patrol Sector 2, and there was 55 in Patrol Sector 2. So, there's quite a disparity between the patrol sectors. And there was, in the paper, there was going to be, according to the paper, there was going to be added emphasis. So, I really don't know what the answer to this situation is, and I don't know if anybody, if you guys have any recommendations or whatever, I don't know. But it's really, it's extremely troublesome for me to be on the 4th of July and have all that fireworks going off, and there's a, and you know, I don't want to restate the policy, but you all know what it is.
And sir, I'm going to need you to wrap up your three minutes or...
I'm finished.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Is there anyone? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name's Bob Zimmerman. I live at 33029 46th Place South in Auburn. I would like to speak about my favorite subject, which is saving lives up on that hill. This morning, when I opened my email, I was greeted by an email stating that October 18th this year is the great shakeout for the drill to practice up for earthquakes. And I realized, well, I don't know how to drill. I looked out my kitchen window, and I have a, I have a little piece of flagging tape up there for a wind flag, so that I will know which way the winds blow, and that way I'll know whether if there's a propane leak, if it's going to be pocketed there between the wall and the house and the earth berm. And I was able to do quite a bit of research, and I was able to finally pretty well conclude that that full tank is going to be, would provide an explosion for us that would be well over twice what happened in Oklahoma City to bring down that federal courthouse. Now, half of it would be comparable to about, half, half the tank would be comparable to the explosion that did bring down the courthouse. And, I mean, this is so basic to the code. Now, there may not be a specific thing that says you cannot build this just like that, but the code violation is, the intent of the code is to save lives and protect property and protect health. Okay? So this is a code violation, no matter how you look at it. And I cannot believe that I have to come down here and plead with you guys to take some kind of action. You've got fireworks ordinances that are exceeding state law, you passed negligent driving law well before the state did. You can certainly pass an ordinance that says we're going to correct any situation that could destroy a neighborhood. I mean, my gosh, we've got a baby there that's a couple houses away that's only two months old. I mean, if it gets me, I've had a good life. I got nothing, no complaints. But that kid's got his whole life ahead of him. I mean, come on. You guys are well-educated people, why can't you figure this out? It's just beyond my comprehension. The fact that I have to come down here and do this is more disgusting and discouraging to me than the risk that I take living by that thing. I mean, come on. Wake up, people. Looks like I'm about out of time. I will see you probably in two weeks with another, one of my wonderful little, what do you call them, orientations or something? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Hearing none, we will move on. We have no correspondence this evening, and so we will move to council ad hoc committee reports. Council ad hoc committee chairs may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on assigned tasks and may give their recommendation to the City Council if any. And tonight, for the Finance Committee, Councilmember Holman.
Thank you, Mayor. Finance Committee reviewed 396 claims vouchers from a report dated 7/11/2018 for a total amount of $5,392,000. All claims were reviewed and were reasonable and good order. Reviewed the payroll vouchers from 6/28 through 7/11 were reviewed. There were 31 checks, 577 direct deposits, and eight associated electronic funds transfers for tax, retirement, et cetera, for a total of $2,383,000. And the Finance Committee recommends approval by council.
Thank you. Councilmember DeCorsi for the Roads Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. The committee comprised of Councilmember Trout Manuel, myself, and Deputy Mayor Baggot met on July 3 with staff. We continue to review the Transportation Improvement Plan, project by project, and we're just about finished with the review, and we are going to, once again, kind of look at priority issues as we complete that, and then report back to the council shortly after that. We haven't scheduled our next meeting yet, but I imagine in the next couple of weeks we'll have our next meeting scheduled.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered by the City Council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor Baggot.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Baggot.
Thank you. We have several items on the consent agenda tonight. We have the minutes of the June 18 regular City Council meeting, the minutes of the June 25 special City Council meeting, and the minutes of the July 9, 2018 City Council Study Session. We have the claims vouchers and the payroll vouchers noted by Councilmember Holman, and we also have a Public Works Project CP 1718, which is to approve the award of a contract to Miles Resources for the South 277th Street Preservation Project.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember DeCorsi?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question on the Public Works Project CP 1718. We have a, one bid that came in, one responsibility that came in that was approximately 21% above the engineer's estimate, and looking at the current construction climate, looking at the probability that we continue to have of lack of paving contractors, and looking at probably that going to continue on in the future with some escalation cost, my question to staff would be, are we looking at modifying or changing our engineering estimates to reflect the current conditions?
So the short answer to that is yes, we look at current bidding and bid climate, and we adjust our estimates as we go forward. What you're seeing right now is a significant escalation in the amount of paving work happening around this area, which is making it difficult to estimate exactly what those contracts are going to come in at, given where we're at in this year.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. We have no unfinished business, we have no new business, so we will move to ordinances. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 6685, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, authorizing the mayor to execute a payback agreement between the City of Auburn and Jeff and Gwen Johnson for utility extension.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Councilmember Holman.
I move for the approval of ordinance number 6686. Well, I'm getting ahead of myself. Apologies, 6685.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Pelosi?
I second it, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
Yes, this is a... Yes, this is a payback agreement where somebody who wants to go on the sanitary sewer has to put in a line that goes past vacant lots that could be built on in the future. So, the expense that Mr. Johnson will pay to have an eight-inch sewer line put in approximately 300 feet plus a couple manhole covers, he, when those lots sell that the sewer line faces, they will pay to hook up, and Mr. Johnson will get a rebate.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 6685, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes.
Ordinance Number 6686, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, relating to a construction sales tax exemption, reenacting the exemption and amending Chapter 3.60 of the Auburn City Code.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Councilmember Holman.
I promise, I'll try better this time. I move for the acceptance of Ordinance Number 6686.
You just really like Number 6686. Is there a second? Councilmember DeCoursey.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
We've had on the books for about four years, a, an ordinance that allows us to pay back or refund construction sales tax for people that would build a large residential dwelling unit like the track apartments across the street. And they refund up to 20% of the construction sales tax, but not to exceed $100,000. And so far, in the time of this ordinance, we've had one builder take advantage of this, and that was the, the track apartments across the street. But even though this isn't used very frequently, it does serve very good notice to other developers that we want to come into our city and build quality projects. So, this ordinance would reenact the exemption and amend the charter of the Auburn City Code.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 6686, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes.
Resolution Number 5374, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, authorizing the mayor to execute a real estate agreement between the City of Auburn and Puget Sound Energy for conveyance of a utility easement.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Councilmember Pelosi.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for the adoption of Resolution 5374.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Trout, Manuel.
I second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Pelosi.
Yes, Puget Sound Energy wants to replace the natural gas facility connected to Auburn High School's West Grandstand. A survey conducted in connection with the service revealed that a PSE gas line facility was located on a portion of Veterans Memorial Park, and there were no property rights easements granted by the city at that time. For the best interest of public health and safety, to convey a utility easement for access, maintenance, repair, and replacement of the existing gas facility to PSE.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of Resolution Number 5374, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right, we have concluded the business portion of the meeting, and now we will move on to Mayor and Councilmember reports. At this time, the mayor and City Council may report on significant items associated with their appointed positions on federal, state, regional, and local organizations. We will begin with Deputy Mayor Baggett.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I didn't really have any meetings. Most of them were canceled during the month of July, but they're going to resume in August. But I did, with the mayor and other representatives of the council, attend two ribbon cuttings, one for the Habitat for Humanity.
But the ones he paid attention to and took advice from were the ones from inside the City of Auburn, because he was always focused on how to best serve his community. And when he, when he was getting ready to leave the council, he was quoted with, "It's been a fabulous journey, and I have enjoyed every minute of the 12 years I have been on the council. I love the work. I want everybody to understand something about City Council people. They are not politicians. They are civil servants, and they work to serve the city they are elected from. The pay is not so great, so don't think about running for council if you need the money, because you'll be in trouble." But when he left the City Council in December of 2009, then Mayor Lewis declared December 21st Gene Serino Day in Auburn, and then Governor Chris Gregoire declared Gene Serino Date in the State of Washington. Now, you might think that's a little odd as to the governor naming a day after someone just because they've served their community. But that's not the only thing, that's not the only thing in common that our then-governor had with Gene Serino. Gene Serino taught Governor Gregoire how to drive when she was attending Auburn High School. Now, he went around saying that he, that she was his favorite student. "I won't be too offended, because he taught me how to drive too," but he wasn't saying that I was his favorite student. It was, it was Governor Gregoire. And so, Friday morning, I reached out to her to let her know that our favorite teacher had passed, and she wanted me to send condolences to our City Council and to his family. He was a proud World War II veteran, and he would often muse about the fact that he lived in Alaska for nine years, when it was still a territory where he worked construction and had a commercial fishing boat. Now, one year, when we had gone out of the city for our council retreat, at the end of a long day, we all gathered in a local restaurant and were having a lovely dinner, and he was entertaining us with great stories about what he did throughout his life. And all of a sudden, he took an empty wine glass and put it squarely on top of his head. We were all kind of sitting in shock, looking at him, and he grinned and laughed, and he said, "Up in Alaska, when I needed another glass of wine, I'd put the empty glass on my head, and they'd bring me another glass. I'm assuming the same thing's going to happen here." And it did. Those are just the types of things that he would do, you know, always, always something to kind of entertain us. On a hot night like tonight for a council meeting, it would have been no surprise to see him show up in a pair of sandals with socks, a pair of shorts, and a short-sleeved shirt, because he knew that it didn't matter what his attire was. He knew that he was here dedicated to the city, and the attire didn't make any difference. When he left Alaska, he spent time earning a bachelor's degree from Washington State University. And in 1954, beginning in 1954, he spent 27 years as a teacher. He retired from Auburn High School in 1982, and I think many of us here, we posted on Facebook about his passing, and so many students, so many former students have written their memories about him, because he was just larger than life. He was someone who cared deeply for his family and for this community and worked hard every day. I would say he was an ombudsman. He was always out there looking to see what he could do to make a difference in this community. After he, after he retired from full-time teaching, he became a substitute teacher throughout the district, and I would say he entertained numerous classes of students over the years. And John, as you mentioned, he was the wrestling coach at Auburn High School, and he was Auburn High School's first wrestling coach in 1959 and remained in that position for 20 years. He was inducted into the Washington Interscholastic Activities Association Wrestling Hall of Fame in 2012. His induction statement reads, "Serino is considered by many as one of the Washington forefathers of wrestling. He is credited for creating two high school programs, laying the foundation for the current format of the WIAA State Wrestling Tournament, and building international relations with wrestlers from across the world." During his coaching career, Serino helped lead his teams to five league championships, four regional titles, and five top-four finishes. He coached 17 state individual place winners and five state champions. He was a frequent participant and attendee at the Auburn Senior Activity Center, and true to his ways, he made quite an impact there as well, because he led the Auburn Senior Wellness Team, and in 2012, he was honored with the Volunteer Emeritus Status at the Senior Center. He always used to tell me, because I called him Mr. Serino, I could not, because he had been my teacher, I could not, out of respect, call him Gene, even though after a year or so on, I know it drove him crazy. He said, "For heaven's sakes, Nancy, call me Gene. I can't." So, with that, Mr. Serino, rest in peace. Your work here is done, and we are all better off for having been in your circle. Thank you for allowing me that. And, Mr. City Attorney, do we have any need for an executive session tonight?
No, Mayor.
We are adjourned.[1314.86]